I believe he's in the Orioles. Getting ready, 21 days till opening.
Doing the Orioles anyway. Well, that's a last place theme in the American government.
If you're a fan, you're a fan.
Good to see you there.
Are you in the last place?
We were thinking about trying to drive down.
The 10 inning tie game. They stopped at the 10.
How are you?
Good, sir.
Very good. Well, two things already. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
My remarks are very simple. This is a one-note samba. We're here to discuss the results of the, all the efforts that have been done by the committee, on which I am pleased on, to come up with a survey that is comprehensive and good for everybody concerned. That being said, I hope everybody's had a chance to look over the survey and we can make comments. But first, we have to have public comment. We have any public comments at all. Joe.
I haven't had an opportunity to look at the final survey. I don't know if it's available or not. Looked at the committee report. Good point. And good morning. Joe Reynolds, 84 Watertown Road. I just out of curiosity, one thing. See this photograph here, Bay Side Gazette? That's three, two committee members there in the photograph. I was just wondering at that last meeting if there were four members present, zero or four?
I'll do the work. You don't care.
The, I saw some original draft questions and I think these are a result of those. And apparently one of, or quite a few of them are apparently still in there. These are just observations for consideration. The, I'm looking at this story on page seven, March 10th edition of Bay Side Gazette. And it says, "Draft questions range from, quote, 'How do you see the demographics of Ocean Pines changing in the future?'" Question. It's an interesting question. And this question was originally followed by another question. What amenities do you believe that Ocean Pines are, I forget how exactly how it was phrased. Again, I'll have, what amenities or services do you think Ocean Pines will need as a result of these demographic changes? On the surface, it's an interesting question. But what we're doing is asking 8,440 association members to speculate on the demographics at some distant point in the future, and then to speculate on what that speculated demographic will need. I'm not so sure what, what could go for. This says that we're going to send out the question largely by email. I'm not so sure what that means. For starters, we don't have email addresses for, but approximately half, plus or minus of our association members. Now, there is an option that people can request a written bill, or they may see a link. And I'm assuming what these people are going to receive is a link, a URL, universal resource locator link, to a website. They can go and fill the stuff in. Do you know if that's correct?
Yes, but there's going to be three options. One is email. People don't have email. We can send them paper.
Right.
Or we'll have a access to a computer where people, if they want to come in, they could fill it out on their computer.
Right, I understand. And again, that all sounds very interesting, except that obviously the emphasis and the major return is going to be on returns from people who go to a website via their own computer or telephone and fill in this. I doubt that we're going to have any substantial percentage of people requesting writ forms or going to a library to fill it out. There'll be some, of course. I don't think there'll be many. So this is going to be largely a return from those people who, who receive an email from OPA with the link. Some may see it in the written newsletter if it gets in there before this happens. This is interesting here. Derica said he was looking for one response per individual in Ocean Pines. Per individual. Including both homeowners and renters, temporary and full-time residents. No more than five questionnaires per household we accept. And he said measures will be taken in order to prevent fraud. With the, the way that I understand that this survey is going to be taken, in the previous part, Derica said he was going to prevent fraud by the use of IP numbers. For those who don't know what an IP number is, every time you log on to your computer, your phone, your, your device is given something called an IP number. It's usually a two, four, six, like an eight-digit number with a bunch of periods. They're unique in every way. So identifies you when you go to a website, they know your IP number. Here's the problem. IP numbers are not unique to the individual. You may get a different IP number every time you log on. In fact, if you use a cell phone, every time you change cells, you get a different IP number. You could get a different IP number every time you open up your computer depending on what your provider is. So that, for example, just to explain something, a possibility, if a person lives in Washington, DC, and they have a home in Ocean Pines, they can come down here, that computer here, fill out this form five times, go back to Washington, fill it out five times. Or if they were really wanting to kind of screw things up, they could figure out a way to sit at one computer because you can, many people have what they call a hidden IP number. You can go and pay for a service and a lot of people have it because they want privacy. They can vote a thousand times every time they log on, they have a different IP. There's no security in this. That's one of the problems with voting. And we don't know who's voting. We have no idea. In my view, only association members should have a vote. I mean, this thing could be, this URL, somebody in Australia can fill it out if they want it, not likely to. But I guess the, the issue for me is, number one, the questions, I believe, are questioned as to their value. There was one question that our president would even question, and that was, what amenities can we do without? And his worried look on his face was, oh my goodness, suppose everybody fills in here that we don't need golf? What are we going to do? Right?
Possible.
So, I guess my, my whole thing with this is, I think it's a waste of money. Number two, there's that old adage that all of you probably heard, garbage in, garbage out, and I'm afraid this is going to be one of those. Thank you, Tom.
Any other public comment? Now we're coming to the discussion of the planned survey. Unfortunately, Nemo is not here.
Yeah, I emailed him.
Emailed.
And he's out of the office, so he may be on his way.
That's why we had a meeting set for early. Because I know Jack's looking at me and I'm looking at myself.
That's right. Yeah.
You're holding your head up. I don't blame you.
Yeah, I didn't get an email.
I'd like to open it up to the committee. First, Steve, why don't you run the game here? Got this survey questionnaire, which you all have. And we have lots of, we can do it one of two ways. We can go through each one of the questions or talk about it in general first, find out what our feeling is on it. This is a kind of a questionnaire, Joe, that questions the validity of it or the efficacy of it. All I can say is that Memo has done this several occasions before, and it's been successful.
Where HOA is?
Where the HOA is? I think one of them was.
Yes.
Where?
Howard County.
Do you have the name?
Point of order here. This is a board meeting with their advisory committee.
Exactly.
Okay. Sorry, Joe, but you're not on the board, you're not on the advisory.
Run for office.
So I need to hear from, I would like to hear from the committee about how this all got put together and however they want to present this.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Tom?
You're on the board.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted, I wanted to make sure. I would suggest that, you know, let this committee make a presentation to give us an idea, you know, the background, you know, why they selected a certain format, why they selected a certain group to respond, and to flesh out a little bit about how they're going to disseminate that information. Because, you know, I'm unaware. I just, as I think most board members. And Bob.
As part of the comprehensive planning.
Keep going as chairman of the committee.
We needed to know how to plan, how to advise the board, how to plan for the future. Dr. Derica, who works out of Salisbury University, it's called Beacon, B-E-A-C-O-N, Business something Enterprise, what he has, he has a computer program that we're not going to decide what should be done, but he's going to come up with four or five modules based on prior trends. What's happened, what prior trends in the past is what may be done in the future. We, this is the first part of our comprehensive plan. These questions are sent to everybody. Dr. Derica said that about 70% of the people in Ocean Pines have email. We discussed at the board that we wanted as many people as possible to be able to answer. We know there is maybe not a significant number, but there is a number of people who don't have email, who don't have computers. We also, if they didn't want to get paper, we're going to have access to a computer so they can sit down and answer the questions. Dr. Derica said that he's done this for 25 years and there are programs on his website answering that prevent fraud. I don't really understand, but he can tell where these answers are coming from based on the program. Once we get these questions back, they're going to come out, they're going to come out April 15th, and we, we're targeting that we're going to get them back by the end of May. Once we get these answers back, we will then sit down as a committee and get an idea of what the people want, where they think we are, what they're thinking. We may know most of the answers, may not. There may be some surprises, may not be some surprises. We don't know. Once we come up, we tried, we sat down as committee and came up with all these different broad questions. Some of them are specific, but then most of them have a comment at the end. So if people want to write a blurb about, spread more than what's in the answers. This is different from most surveys that are done in the past because the background was that the questions were made up from the documents from the last 10 years of the comprehensive plan, all the documents that are here. We actually had, we had the focus groups where we invited people, we had two, um, two focus, three focus groups, where people came and it was done at the library and we were able to ask them questions. And it was a give and go questions of what they were thinking, based on that, and, and phone calls that we made to people. So we accumulated all that information and we made these questions up. Then, once we get the questions back, we'll formulate some of the answers. Then the second phase of this operation is that as a board, as a board with Dr. Derica, we will create three or four modules where if, for example, if we spend $1,000 for the, for the golf club, where is that going to be taken away from something else? It's going to set priorities. What kind of priorities there are going to be. So, based, based on that, then we present that to the board. And Dr. Derica has a computer program that says if we add money to here, how is it going to affect another project? And this is for five years in advance. He will come back every year based on changing demographics to update the program. And the board will have the final decision of what, how they want to approach it. And that will be presented shooting for June or July.
Excellent. Yeah. Jack.
I was going to say, that begs the question, and I think Joe hit it on the head. Why are renters involved? I mean, why are renters involved if, if this has to do with allocating of Ocean Pine resources toward various amenities or entities? And renters are paying money to property owners, why would they be involved and could that be considered a double vote? That would be the property owner making a, a judgment as well as a renter making a judgment, all based on one piece of property.
May I answer that, Jack?
Sure, absolutely.
Frank Daly, 834 Ocean Parkway. Your charter to us, as from the board and the committee, was, your charter, the board, to us as the committee, was to include stakeholders who are non-residents, investigate areas like healthcare services, you know, other amenities. So since the original charter told us to go outside of the residential, we went outside of. And one of the issues that has kind of constantly came, come up in terms of just operationally and, and you know, to Joe's point, to your point, why are we talking with non-residents? We were asked, and if we were just at the pleasure of the board, told to poll residents, it would be a lot easier process. Because who lives at 834 Parkway? You don't know if I'm a resident. You don't know if I'm an owner, a renter, you know, temporarily there, but we're trying to fulfill the charter that you gave us.
Okay, well, may I follow up, Dave?
Sure.
Thank you. Then let's take it one step further. Will we be able to segregate information as to a true property owner and a renter? And can we take that, the impact of that renter's input into the overall scope of the report on this Beacon study? How? Can, in other words, can we segregate it out and say, okay, future boards may or may want to consider their input, current board may not? Or vice versa?
Right, interesting question. In my opinion, based on everything that I've heard, the answer to that question is no.
No.
We can basically segregate it by residents, or we can basically segregate it by, by polling people based on whatever.
Your question 44 clearly asks whether you're a renter.
Yeah, exactly, Tom.
So you ought to be able to segregate the data very easily as long as I answer question 44 accurately.
Well, to follow up, to follow up.
Should be easy.
We're trying to get an idea of what everybody who uses Ocean Pines, what their thoughts about. Renters may have different thoughts about owners.
Oh, I'm sure.
Okay? So we want to get, renters use the amenities, renters use the pools. So we want to get an eye, and they have a different view of, and we're building for owners, we're building for everybody, we're playing for everybody who wants to use Ocean Pines. So we need their information and we're going to get it because they're going to answer, they're going to answer the renter. And there may be differences, may not, we don't know. But we need everybody's, everybody's idea because not only owners use it, everybody uses it.
I'm not going to keep it up. I'll just leave. Unless I go, then it's down, but otherwise it remains.
I didn't want to jump in on that. It's okay.
Do you have something?
Very good. Yeah, Frank mentioned the charter was, is that, we had that charter in writing?
I have something in writing back about your charter.
This is the charter that board wrote?
Board approved of the project.
I'm looking at Bob.
No, no, I'm not looking at you doing.
But you can give me a little look.
No, I'm listening. I don't know. What I remember is the document.
So in other words, if there's a charter, it should be in writing. And we should have it.
I can help explain in support of Steve's position. This is not a comprehensive plan for the Ocean Pines Association. This is a comprehensive plan for the community that surrounds and Ocean Pines supports. Okay? This is not, if, if we wanted a comprehensive plan for the organization of Ocean Pines, we would go to that guy sitting right there and tell him to go write it and put the right people together and go build it. This is for the community because our amenities are open to outside people, they're open to a lot of different people, not just members. And I'm just giving you some background on where the, where the guideline came from a long time ago.
Okay.
And that's why. That, there's the difference in why Steve is saying this is for, you have to get input from non-owners because this was a plan for the whole community, not for the OPA.
See, Tom, where I'm, I'm sorry.
There is a, there is a big difference.
Yeah, between the two.
I'm sorry.
I have, I have the resolution. In fact, Tom, you signed it?
I did. Can I make copy?
April 27th.
Make sure it's.
It says.
What year? What year?
2013.
13.
Yes.
Okay, so that was, so that would explain why I would not have seen this.
Correct.
Although, although.
If I can read it.
What that has to do with the.
Quite frankly, what difference does it make?
Right.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is what they're working off of.
Right.
Well, you know what difference it makes is, if, if the premise that, on which they're working is, is not one for which I subscribe, and it certainly isn't, then I have to start from an entirely different place.
It says residents and guests.
You got it.
All residents and guests.
Future boards, you don't know what's.
Is that 07?
Yes.
And what is, what is, what's the title of that?
Let's see.
Oh, Bob's getting it, never mind. I'm getting it. I've heard what Steve said about Dr. Derica and, and, you know, and I've heard this since we voted to proceed with this study. I've heard that there's a computer program, it's going to have modules, that it's got, we have never, what I have not seen, is one specific application, one specific application of Dr. Derica's program. I have no idea what's in, after all this time, I have no idea what's in that program. I have no idea what its output is. I have no idea what the inputs to the program are. I have, I have zero.
We, for the first time, last meeting, Dr. Derica did bring in something to show us on another client, she had to blank out the names, to show you how the modalities work. So he said, well, I want to increase the golf fees, what's that going to do to the, you know, what's that going to do to the golf membership? Or he'd say, we want to increase the swimming fees, or we want to decrease the swimming fees, or we want to open it up. So this modality would help show how that, what effect that does to it based upon what they found out in the questionnaire. So in other words, it, it doesn't give us a plan to tell us that this is what we must do, no. It says if you do this, board, some future boards ahead, do this, here's what we think the impact will be on the, on the group as a whole. That's what it's for.
Well, what did?
And I hope he's going to bring it. I don't know.
Okay, hopefully, hopefully, I mean, I have not, my statement stands.
Sure.
And if anybody else has seen it, I have not seen one tangible thing telling me what these programs are going to do.
But you're right.
Or what they consist of, or, or what the relationships are within the programs. I mean, I grew up as a system engineer. Gesin da gezada, and there's something that modifies it in the middle. What is it? And if you can't say what it is, then I think we have good reason.
As he pointed out, he can't fill in the modalities until he has the answers to the sort of, it's like, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? I mean, that's, that's the kind of situation. He showed us a sample modality of an electric company, I believe, and.
Showed who?
Committee.
Committee members. Us. Pussits.
So we, we have not.
And you haven't seen it, no. But I had hoped that when it was going to come, that he'd bring that with him and you'd all gather around and look at how, when this happens and that happens. He showed us how it was.
Now, now, let me say, I kind of, if I can, because this kind of connects to the general discussion, this is just my own list. And, and the first thing on my, my list, and I did not go through Joe Reynolds and full disclosure about this. During, or, who's answering this survey? It obviously applies to homeowners and renters because of that one question, Tom. But who answers for a particular property? Both of the property owners? I heard five someplace, as many as five people can answer for the property. And then why? Why? For a particular property, how many family members can answer? Do they use separate forms or one form? Does Mary and I each take our own form and say, I don't? All right? And, I mean, let me put it this way. You gave us a list of questions, but you don't, there's no explanation of all of that. That's a fact. Okay? We don't have it. It's not here. I mean, I have much of other specific questions, but without having that, I don't, I'm not sure I know what we're here for.
Can I, can I just, this is what Dr. Derica tells us. We're trying to get as many views as possible. There are, if, if you have a husband and wife, a husband and wife can answer. If you have a child in the house, they can answer. We're trying to get, we're not trying to decide something, we're trying to get as many opinions as possible. And Dr. Derica has, has the computer program that can detect how, if, you know, some person is putting in more than they should, prevent fraud.
Sure. Obviously, I was not a part of this process as a new board member. However, correctly if I'm wrong, haven't there been many meetings where Mr. Dr. Derica has explained this whole process several times? I'm saying that based on what's been reported in the newspaper. So I'm kind of not understanding why all of a sudden there is this lack of knowledge about this when it obviously was discussed at length before the prior board voted to go ahead with, excuse me, with this expenditure. So I'm, I'm not understanding why you would have done that without having any sort of knowledge about what you're paying.
Speaking for, excuse me, speaking for myself, when this vote was taken, I was not present. I had other business elsewhere. That's number one. Number two, to the best of my knowledge, I'm going to say that as far as board interaction is concerned, I can think of two other instances where there was board interaction. Now, I was also involved in a questionnaire with my friend Doug over there, and you, I think. I think we sat next to one another in, in one of those interactive, interactive meetings. Yeah. So I'm, I'm aware of three interactions that I've had as a board member. So that's why these things are coming up. There, there are some gaps in knowledge.
Yeah, well, I'm talking about prior to you all voting against this, I would thought would have discussed at length what you were paying.
Yeah. Well, actually, we, we discussed it and what we had from Dr. Derica is the very same thing that I'm hearing Steve saying today. Well, we have this program, we develop modules, it'll give you some idea of something, and no examples, no specific. If you're asking, did we vote for something without understanding, I can frankly tell you right now.
Yes.
It's one of the few times that I've, that I've done. But I, you know, there's always an exception, that I absolutely voted for that without knowing what we were going to get out of it. And I still don't know. And, you know, I'll apologize for it, but on the other hand, if after a year, nobody can say, answer the very basic question, and by the way, Steve, this is a comprehensive plan advisory committee. It really hasn't got anything to do with the. It really hasn't got anything to do with the study, nothing. Well, I mean, it, it, the study or the whatever, it's not even a study. I don't even know what it is. The survey, study, program, modules, whatever it is. I don't know what, I don't know what we're gonna get.
Dr. Derica was at a meeting, a last meeting, at least twice. He explained what was going on, he explained the process, he explained step one and step two. There were some questions back and forth and you voted on it. He came to last meeting and he spoke about, there were questions coming from the board. He answered the questions. If need be, like he did with our committee, committee, he can bring in a computer and show you how it works.
Tom, you made a comment, Steve, about the thousand dollar reference. You made an example.
Yeah.
Where you said a thousand dollars goes here, doesn't go there.
Yeah.
So there's, which I don't agree with, by the way, there's this assumption of a zero-sum game that if I spend a dollar over here, I therefore didn't spend a dollar over there.
No, no, no.
I just, please explain that to make sure that I don't misinterpret.
Like Pat said, like Pat said.
Well, whoever, whoever said it.
If you spend money here, how does it affect other programs? It's a priority. If you say-
Oh, okay.
It's a priority.
If it's a priority, I'm, I'm fine with that.
That, that's all it's about.
So there isn't an assumption of a zero.
No, 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 it's a priority.
So are you, are you saying that this is going to establish priority?
You are gonna establish priority based on what we come up with.
Well, what are we going to see exactly to help establish priority?
We can talk about this relay stool again.
Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, this is not my idea. Tom Herrick couldn't be here because he's taking care of family business in, in New York, Long Island. Um, but you, you alluded to it a little bit earlier, Pat, when you talked about, um, you, you know, funding certain projects and the impact of this study on the funding of it. Uh, Tom is suggesting that one of the questions should center around the reaction of the individuals who are taking this survey to a thirty million dollar building project, capital improvements program, which involves, you know, various areas over Ocean Pines, to see how they feel about it. And I, I just wanna throw that on the table for additional discussion. Yeah. First, thank everybody on the committee for all your hard work. I know this has been a long, you know, drawn out process and thank you for your time. That's, uh, I was the lone vote against this from the beginning. I did not think that we were gonna get maybe what we were looking for. Quite frankly, I didn't know what we were looking for. Uh, if we were looking to, for college kids sitting behind a, a computer to tell us what we were gonna do with our community, then that scared me. I also, you know, if you're sending, sending this out, uh, do people know what, you know, just going down this survey? Do people know what Public Works does? People know what General Maintenance does? Do people know what, you know, is part of each and every one of those amenities? And how can they answer those questions unless they know? So I would think that this would have to have pages of explanation on each different department that they're answering a question about, or they're not gonna know.
It's just a perception.
Uh, quite frankly, if we wouldn't get seventy-five to eighty percent participation in this, I'm not sure it would do us a bit of good. You know, I'm just not sure that, that it would do us a bit of good to, to, you know, to-
The survey list goes normal for about fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred.
Yeah.
That's considered statistically correct.
I get that, and that's what scares me, you know, that's what scares me out of the, you know, unless we have a high number of responses and good responses, I, you know, it may be the same little group is, okay, let's get together and, and say this and let's get to, get, get together and say that. That's what, you know, that's what scares, scares me.
But the computer program that he has can filter out if somebody's trying to stuff the mailbox. He says he can filter out these type of things with his program.
He says he can.
Right. And, and again, I, I, you know, again, the non-residents, to me, are, you know, I, I really don't, I don't wanna say I don't care about them, but it's, it's, I, I don't think that they have any-
He's under, going under a medical procedure.
Undergoing, who is?
Yeah, I wanna, can I, may I have a, I have a, I'm not gonna go down the, the whole list. But just an observation, I mean, for starters, just look at the questions themselves. This is very heavily oriented residents of Ocean Pines. People who own homes and live, there's no question about it. There's only, out of the forty-five questions, there's only one specifically addressed to non-OPA members. And that is of the nature, are you gonna move here or what? There's like, there's one of those questions. You're gonna sell, you're gonna move, you're gonna do whatever, one question, one question. And yet, I believe our common wisdom tells us that half of our members of the association don't, aren't full-time residents. I don't know if it's forty-five percent or whatever, but you know.
Fifty-two percent.
We, we take, we take fifty-two, I take any number around there. And yet, you have not a specific question, nothing in here which even considers where they're at and what they're going to do, except for that one question. And then, based on what Bill said, question number one, you, you talked about, do they know what Public Works is? Do they know what, you know? Well, you know, I almost have to ask, who's snarking about it? Does the person who wrote the question know what they are? So for an example, what core services provided by Ocean Pines Association have you used in the past five years? Admin and management, police, fire EMS, public works, general maintenance, and other? Now, I think if you get somebody who answered never to all of those, then you probably got your next service writer because, guess why? There is no answer to the question. Everybody uses them all. Everybody uses them all. So, I mean, all you do is go back and think when people do that. Now, I can see why people might say, well, there must be some reason they ask this question. But without thinking, well, maybe there is no reason. I'm sorry, I'm picking on one question, but-
Dave, can I respond to something there? Because as you know, I, I do this kinda work for economic development. And if you look at questions forty-three through forty-five, question three, are you a resident of Ocean Pines? Do you rent or own? How long have you lived here? And if it's NA, I don't live here. As long as those three questions are answered honestly, you're going to be able to bifurcate the data based on whether somebody lives here or not. So that part of your recent comment can be worked with the data. Now, your question about some of the questions, you know, I, I had a similar when it came to the question about the, the dues. You know, what's your feeling on the dues? And I wanted to write in the words compared to what. Uh, you know, there, there, that, that was the one question that kinda, I went, what am I supposed to do with this? What are we comparing it to? Uh, but, uh, as far as the logistics of who lives here and who doesn't, just, I mean, Derek is not here, so the only thing I can do is look at it and go, I believe the data can bifurcate based on those answers to determine whether you're a resident here, whether you rent, whether you live here full-time, or whether you don't. What you're saying is that they may be put front of the question. Well, I don't care where they are, as long as they're answered honestly, the data can be, the data can be worked.
Uh, I, I think this is a complete waste of time. Uh, and I don't wanna sit here and go through question by question. I have questions, of course, about all of this, having reviewed it. But Mr. Dr. Derica is not here and that is the person I thought was supposed to be here to be able to deal with our question. So I, I just don't think we should go on with this.
I apologize to the board, I had no knowledge.
I think-
That's okay.
I think this needs to be rescheduled.
It's unfair to ask these guys to-
Well, yeah, it's not, yeah, I think this needs to be, uh, rescheduled when we know he's going to be available. And at that point, we go question by question, any comments or issues that we have.
Can I make a suggestion? I, I agree with that. My suggestion, instead of sitting here next meeting and going question by question, maybe each director can send either me or Dr. Derek the questions they have about it. So when Dr. Derica comes, he'll be able to answer everybody's question.
I'm happy to do that.
I think everybody should review it and then send questions to me and I'll send it to Dr. Derica. And then we could cut down a lot of this, you know, uh, all these questions.
Sure. That's fine.
I don't mind writing anything, matter of fact, I already have my list right, right there.
I've got one written out as well.
Except that, if you can't get past the first step, which is what the heck are you doing? I mean, what, don't tell me, you know, Steve, you're spouting out the same stuff I heard in the first meeting. We've got a program, we've got modules, it's gonna produce something, but it's not gonna produce the final end. It's gonna go to give you the hints of figuring out, is it? What is it?
All right, that'd be your first question, Dave.
And, and, and if I can't get to the answer to that, I don't care about any of it.
And I think Pat had the same questions until he saw the program.
I had the same questions until I saw it.
And I think, I think you could, a lot of these questions will be answered if we all sit around and do the same demonstration. Because I, I was questioned it when I saw this.
I was not called this meeting, but I hadn't seen something.
Right, right.
Hey, I, yeah, look, Tom, I can sit here and put you guys up on, you know, a witness stand for the next hour. I think, I think there's this general consensus. I move that this motion be, this meeting be adjourned after media questions and be reconvened with Dr. Derica. Is there a second for that? I mean, you asked, made it whatever.
Second.
Whatever.
Yep.
All in favor?
All in favor, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
All in favor, yeah, yeah, yeah.
This is about here. Now, now, guys, we can do it two days, two ways. He can come here, or if you wanna go to Salisbury, he can come here, okay?
What do we do? Any of that, Bob?
I'm just thinking of, not your question.
Yeah, no, we have to have media questions before we adjourn. Any media question?
Um, I sent a-
You actually don't have to have media questions.
I did send a-
You don't have to.
We do.
No, I have to. Not all of you adjourned, all of you adjourned, say, all right?
Aye.
I think we already did that.
You had a, you flipped over the media.
Oh, the media question, okay.
You're not re- Well, I wanna, I wanna, if you know the record-